Okay, ladies and gentlemen, I have seven o'clock. If anybody's here for public comment, you need to sign up over there at the lectern. So the first order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance led by Vice Mayor Barbara McCray.
And I'd like to remind everyone that this is December 7th, Pearl Harbor Day.
Yeah.
Twenty-four hundred people killed in the attacks. So let's remember then, as we say, this pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the next order of business is the adoption of the town council agenda. Is anybody that wanted anything added or shifted?
Vice Mayor, if I may?
Yes, ma'am.
We have two additional budget items that are on your table tonight. If we could add those two under the consent agenda, under additional budget commitments, please.
Just add it under consent agenda?
Yes, we've got final tallies for those today. It's what we're waiting on.
All right. All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented with the two corrections.
So move.
Second? All right, all in favor? Thank you, sir. The public session, and I have no one signed up. New business, presentation of Town of Franklin Audit, Martin Starrns Associate. Any questions?
Do you have a vote on the consent agenda?
I thought we did. Did we not?
No, sir.
Okay, okay, all in favor of the...
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as modified.
Thank you, sir. Is that second? All in favor? Thanks, Joe, appreciate it. I just totally overlooked it. Okay, new business, Martin Starrns Associate. Ma'am, you're up. Welcome.
Thank you. It was pretty icy getting here, but, you know, I'm here.
But we're glad you are.
Okay, so we will get started. We have prepared the following PowerPoint to present to you what we feel to be some of the more pertinent topics about the town's fiscal year 20 audit report. The town's report has been submitted to the LGC and approved. Town's report was also issued with a clean, unmodified opinion, no findings or questions of us. This first slide shows a three-year comparison of town's general fund fund balance. As you can see, total general fund fund balance increased at roughly $476,000, or 12%, ending at a little under $4.3 million. The increase in overall fund balance was mainly due to an increase in local option sales tax distribution from the state and restricted intergovernmental revenue. Next, we'll do a side-by-side comparison of the fiscal year 20 available fund balance as opposed to fiscal year 19 available fund balance. This is a calculation used by the LGC to compare units across the state. We start with total fund balance, as previously mentioned, a little under $4.3 million, plus your stabilization by state statute, to a remit your available fund balance of $3.8 million. As you can see, your available fund balance increased roughly $453,000 over the prior year, which was mainly just due to an overall increase in fund balance.
So is that, excuse me, may I ask a question?
You may.
Is that $3.8 million, is that fund balance available for appropriation, or is that gross fund balance?
Roughly, yes. I mean, there's some different classifications, like restrictions committed, assigned. I believe you guys always assign fund balance for next year's expenditures, but that's basically what's available to spend, with the most restricted being taken out of it. This next slide shows another calculation the LGC uses to compare units across the state. It's your available fund balance as a percentage of expenditures within the general fund. The LGC recommends 8% is roughly one month worth of supplies, or, sorry, one month worth of expenditures on hand. So at 82%, the town has roughly 10 months' worth of expenditures on hand. And then next, we'll go through the top three general fund revenues. First, we have your avalarm taxes at 45% of overall general fund revenues. Then your unrestricted intergovernmental revenues at 31%. And lastly, your other taxes and licenses at 18%. And then the remaining 6% are things like restricted intergovernmental revenues, permits and fees, investment earnings, and miscellaneous. And we'll go into more detail of the top three revenues in the next slide. So again, your avalarm taxes, they increased roughly $131,000, or 6%, which was mainly due to an increase in collections over the prior year. And again, your taxes, this classification includes taxes, penalties, and interest, as well as discounts. And then your unrestricted intergovernmental revenues includes things like sales tax, utility tax, your ABC profit distribution, and your occupancy tax. So an overall increase of roughly $98,000, or 7%, which was mainly due to the local option sales tax increase. Then we have other taxes and licenses, also saw an increase of around $23,000, or 3%, which was primarily due to an increase in fire tax revenue. And then we'll go through the top three general fund expenditures. First, we have public safety at 50%, and then general government at 26%, and then transportation at 11%. The remaining 13% includes things like planning and economic development and debt service. So first, we have your general government expenditures, which increased from prior year around $226,000, or 23%. The primary reason for this increase was an increase in administrative expenditures for capital outlet purchases. And then next is your public safety expenditures, also increased around $74,000, or 3%, which was, again, primarily due to an increase in capital outlet expenditures. And then lastly, we have your transportation expenditures, also increased around $39,000, or 9%, which was primarily due to an increase in salaries and benefits and capital outlet And then this last slide goes into a side-by-side comparison of water sewer operations. First, we have your operating revenues, which increased around $39,000. Then your operating expenditures decreased about $187,000, arriving at an operating income of $1.1 million. And then your unrestricted net position, ending at $5.5 million, which is basically the equivalent of your available fund balance within the general fund. That actually increased around $682,000. And then your debt service decreased about $32,000. And that's all I have. Are there any questions?
Any questions from the board?
I didn't look through all the audit reports, so if I ask a question that I should have already looked at, you'll excuse me.
Feel free to email me, Sarah has my contact information. I don't mind any last minute questions.
I'm just wondering what we ended up with in our tax collection rate thing. You know what our final percentage was for the year?
I can tell you that. 96.6. No, 97.
If not, thank you, ma'am.
All right, thank you.
Very kind of you to come over in the snowy night. Okay, so I need a motion to accept the audit as presented?
Move to accept the audit as presented. Martin Starrns.
Have a motion, a second, a second. All right, any further discussion? All in favor? Presentation on update to 160D of the Unified Development Ordinance. Mr. Sencer, you're up, sir.
Thank you, Mayor, Town Council. I'll make this quick. Just got a few slides to go over. Here, you might have known, I don't mean Town Attorney, have been mentioning it for a while, that we've got a significant amount of updates coming up in our zoning code, and minimum housing, and signs, and so on, because the state made some changes and combined 160A and 153A into 160D. And I was going to go over some of the big changes real quick for everybody to go over, so kind of get an idea of what to expect. So this started back in 2014, when the planning, zoning, and land use section of the North Carolina Bar Station initiated a complete rewrite of the zoning code and for planning and development regulation. And like I said earlier, the effort was created Chapter 160D, which consolidated 153A and 160A into a unified chapter. And then it also pulled in some other random chapters here and there, where you had some building codes, sections in other chapters, and sections on manufactured homes, and agricultural bona fides farms. So they put all that in one area now, and then just revamped the whole system. With that, there are some major changes that are in our 160D update that were, you should have in your agenda packet, it was a separate packet. One was the definitions. With 160D, they, the state changed some definitions, and you have to go by their definitions. You can't change them and make them your own. And so you must align with their definitions, and so that's one that we put in there. One was all organizations, county or towns, that have zoning must have a comprehensive plan by July 1 of 2022. We checked that one off, because we just adopted our comprehensive plan last year. And then must have zoning codes and other ordinances updated to comply with 160D by July 1 of 2021. So that is what we're doing now, is bringing this up to our minimum to get our Unified Development Ordinance in compliance with 160D regulations. Some of the other changes, and these will be some of the ones that's going to be a little bit more of, I'll dive into this next one a little bit further on, but advisory boards cannot provide evidence in quasi-judicial matters. So I'll dive in a little bit later with what we're going to oppose with this change. But it seems like when in the past, when we'd have a special use permit come to the town council, we would always send it to the planning board, plan would review it, and they would send the recommendations for approval. Well, now, you cannot have a recommendation from the planning board. You have to, the decision has to be the sole decision of the board making that quasi-judicial decision. So that's something we have to change. Well, I'll dive in there a little bit more here in a minute. Some of the other, these are kind of procedural things that are no longer allowed. No third-party downzonings. So in other words, a neighbor can't come and request a downzone the entire neighborhood, because they heard, you know, the neighbor's going to put in a trailer, and they don't want a trailer, and so that can't be allowed unless they have the owner's consent to do so. But the local government can still proceed with that. So if we see an area that we need to be rezoned, and it was a downzone, and we could do that. Planning boards and board of adjustments must have proportional representation. And this goes off, so if, some towns don't have an ETJ, but we do. So if they do have an ETJ, you've got to have proportional representation equal to the most recent census. So if you do the math, like right now, we have five people on our board of adjustment and planning board that are in-town representation, and then we only have two for ETJ. And when you do the math, it's something we're going to have to look at, we're rearranging that to make it proportional, because right now, our numbers are way off. So we might have to drop somebody or add somebody, we're going to have to have some, decide with the planning board what we want to do on that. We're not going to probably get perfect, where it's, you know, 500 people per person on everybody, but, you know, we need to get, you know, as close as we can.
Proportional population?
Yeah, with, yeah, population.
So what is, is it about 4,000 in town?
Yeah, our last, now, it's not our census number, but the number I know on top of my head, our last census, or state budget office population that's certified by the state was, I think it's 4,082.
And then the ETJ?
See, ETJ is going to be a little bit more of an estimate, and our ETJ estimates, I've got rough, I'll have to recheck them again, because I did them six months ago, was, it was about 2,300 or so in ETJ, so.
So two to one?
Yeah, so we might, with seven-person board, we might have to think of like a four-three board or something.
Perhaps, too, ain't too far off from that. In between.
Yeah, and I'll get some more rock-solid numbers when we get to it later on. Some of the other changes is, of course, manufactured homes cannot be zoned out, and you cannot restrict manufactured homes on age. That's the definition, that's something that we'll have to change in our definitions. But manufactured homes can have appearance and dimension criteria enforcement on them, so, you know, they have to have underskirting, or things, you know, certain things like Conflict of interest, they added some, they expanded the conflict of interest with the 160D updates. At the bottom, you see the direct substantial readily identifiable financial impact still applies to governing board, planning board, board of adjustment, staff. But now, one of the new ones that they have added is no governing board, appointed staff, appointed board, staff shall vote or make administrative decisions if they have a close, familiar business or other relationship with the applicant. And they, they define the family relationship as spouse, child, parent, brother, sister, grandparent, grandchild, step-half, and in-law relationships. And then, like if I had a conflict of interest with a decision, if somebody come in applying for application, it would fall to my supervisor to make the decision on the conflict. So here's what I was talking about, the part where, I was going to dive a little bit more on the advisory part, where you can't have advisory boards making decisions for the board of adjustment or recommendations. First, 160D eliminates conditional use districts. And a code, also, a code cannot have special use only districts. Do you remember in our district, we had, in our UDO, we had, you know, R1, R2, but then we had R1 special use, R2 special use. So those special use districts were, anything that a district required a special use permit has to go away. And then anything that was previously zoned in that use will now just fall back to the comparable conventional district. So if it was a C2 special use district, now it's just going to be C2. Still can require special use permits, but it has to be more for a use than just buy a whole district. So when, earlier when I was talking about the advisory can't make recommendations to a governing board that is deciding on quasi-judicial, or any other board that was maybe, you know, if you had like a review committee couldn't make recommendations to a board of adjustment, or like a technical review committee. Me and the Town Attorney, we've cited, we've been talking about this for a while. In this, we're making a recommendation to move all quasi-judicial matters to the board of adjustment. And then the governing board would still make all the decisions for legislative decisions, your tax amendments like this, or map amendments. And then there's also an added, when you have a map amendment, there's a new statement, it's called a reasonableness statement that you must have with your consensities statements now, that's a mouthful. So with that, the last few changes to make you aware of is, so with this tax amendments, we'll be replacing Board of Alderman and Town Council. So when the ordinance are, we still have Board Alderman referenced throughout the ordinance, we never made that change, because it took more, with the other ordinances we had, it was just a board decision, it didn't require a special hearing. So this one's why we waited till now to do this. So you'll see that throughout. We've clarified some uses. Some uses didn't really match, or we didn't have. There were some areas in the ordinance that there was words that didn't, that made no sense why it was even there, there was no references, so we've cleaned up some areas. We did have created a few definitions that weren't requirement in the 160D definition Of course, we've added a few recommendations from the comp plan, one being garbage facilities on developments, like where garbage is located on a facility. Always kind of went as side and rear, but it was never referenced in that, so this is clarifying that in the ordinance. But expiration dates on land development permits, and updated our parking standards with a minimum and maximum standards, kind of more tailored after Asheville, which we've discussed at times like when we've had some, the developments with Angles. That, any questions?
Thank you, board, any, any question?
Who's the, you say we, who helped you with this?
It was most of me and Town Attorney.
And of these things, what really will we notice? What stands out as something that we're going to have to do different?
Your big one's going to be the special use permits, if, once it goes through planning board, and if the governing board wants to go with board of adjustment making the sole, the decisions on all quasi-judicial matters, that'll be something different. It's not going to become, you're not going to see those come to you anymore, like the big angles, or the shopping centers, scenic grids, you're not going to see them come to you, which then means you're open to comment on them, if you want to, unless Town Attorney advises me different, because then you're just like anybody else. You can comment on them however you want, if you're in favor or not, because you don't have a sense of saying. So that's a big one, which it also is going to help maybe speed up the process. I didn't put it in there, but you could not, with these changes, it also made it illegal, you could not do a rezoning and special use process concurrently. In some where we've had to, somebody's come in, and they need zone C2, and they needed to go to C3 and get a special use permit, you could, we would do both at the same time. We'd be doing a legislative decision and a special use at the same time. They made that illegal as well. So if you kept it the same way, and that ever instance came up, so if somebody come in and wanted to do a major development, and they needed a rezoning and go through special use, it could make the process six to seven months long, because you'd have to finish, you'd have to do the rezoning, get it completely done before you could start the special use. And for a developer, that could be a major burden on them, that they've got a timeframe they want to get going.
So a couple of things I'll note about the process that Justin and I went through with this, the, he and I worked on it, but we're by no means alone. The entire state is confronting this all at the same time, because this is a, as he gave you, there's a drop dead date by which we have to have our ordinance in compliance with this new chapter, or it's ineffective. So the school of government has put together a large number of guidance documents and things that we've found helpful along the way. As he says, and I've tried to drop hints here and there along the way, we knew this was coming, that I really do strongly recommend that you allow all of the quasi-judicial decisions to go to your board of adjustment for consideration. They already are in the habit of all the quasi-judicial bells and whistles. They know those procedures, because they have to follow them already for variance procedures. They also, I think there, another thing is, as Justin just told you, it is now officially outlawed, or will be as soon as we finish these adoptions, to take recommendations from that, from the planning board as an advisory board, because, again, quasi-judicial, it's quasi-judicial because you are weighing somebody's legal rights, what they can do in their property or not. And having some other outside board that's not a party to that weigh in on it would be like having a trial, but having some committee just meet out in the hallway and tell you what they think about it. So that's increasingly become, you know, legal scholars in this are uncomfortable with that whole notion, so it's got trouble written all over it. And lastly, I really feel like the nature of the way the board of adjustment gets to focus in on these things and not have, it's always felt like a real flash in the pan when an applicant shows up here for one night to try to get it right in front of you all, rather than working with a board of adjustment that can say, we're going to slowly examine this evidence, and if we're not comfortable with it, we can tell you, we don't know if this is complete, you may need to bring something back. So that is my strong recommendation, that you keep that in there.
Can you give us an example of a quasi-judicial issue that the board of adjustment would be acting on?
So they already hear quasi-judicial variance applications, and they're similar to special use, because they are, is a legal standard of whether or not, under your ordinance, somebody has a legal right to do something with their property or not. So they take evidence from the parties about, and anybody else who has evidence and has standing as a citizen, whether or not what they are applying to do measures up. So it's pretty much the same thing they're asked to weigh, or would be asked to weigh for a special use.
And their final decision on that from the board of adjustment, is there an appeal if someone doesn't agree with that?
Yes, just like with variances now, the appeal is to superior court. Where we have it now is, it comes here, and then the appeal is to superior.
And it's a spirit.
I'm assuming this wouldn't affect any previous for granted special use plan you deal with now. They're all in. The other thing is, Justin has been telling you, that it is now officially separate, you cannot do a rezoning and a quasi-judicial question at the same time. And it's a good, I'm glad they did that, because asking a board to make a legislative decision for which you could talk to anybody, and think about it in any way you want to, and deal with it however you need to, but you can't consider what the use will be. You know, one of the things you can't do when you do a map amendment is to ask this applicant, what are you going to do with this property? Because they'll be legally enabled to do whatever they can by right within that zone. So you were trying to keep in mind, all right, legislative, we were trying to decide whether to amend this map, and now we're going to turn and make a quasi-judicial decision about whether this applicant can put that store on that property. It's, it's just too much for anybody to try to keep straight in one proceeding. So if you follow our recommendation and put that, the onus of the quasi-judicial decision on the board of adjustment, the only things that will come here are purely legislative, where you're going to look at your comp use plan and say, does this, is this a good idea for this area, to have this group of uses potentially in this, on this property? All of the rest of it then, in terms of whether that applicant has the legal right to put a specific use on a piece of property, then it can be held safe in that board of adjustment procedure.
Any further questions? Okay, we'll take that under advisement, and then the next item is to forward the text amendment to the town planning board. Mr. Sencer and Madam Manager. Mr. Sitzer and Madam Manager. No, I'm sorry, just, Mr. Sitzer.
Yeah, you should see the text amendment document and simply just still follow the normal procedure, because this is a legislative matter. Forward the text amendment to, for Planning Board for their review, and they will review the whole 170 something page document that it is. And then it will come back at some point to the board for you to set a hearing and have a care.
Okay. So we need a motion to forward this text amendment to the Planning Board. Any further discussion? If not, will someone like to make the motion to forward it to the Planning Board?
I'll make the motion.
We have a motion? A second? Any further discussion? All in favor? Okay, I think one thing about the quasi judicial hearings is that there is a move to do away with them. And I think this is one of the issues before the League of Municipalities right now is doing away with quasi judicial hearings and as it applies to the town councils. You find the study correct?
Put them all on Board of Adjustment.
Exactly. Yes, sir. And I think one of the rulings was, it's impossible for a town council member maybe not to have an opinion or somebody come up to them and give them an opinion about a matter that has to come before quasi judicial. Because as y'all all know, years ago, I was banned to the kitchen. I did not know that as a council member, you could not go out and solicit opinions. But I learned. Okay, request for the water bill waiver at 1144 Patton Road. Madam Manager.
Yes, Mr. Mayor and Council. What you have before you tonight is a request from Steve Berkowitz. He is unable to be here tonight, so he's asked that I bring this to the board's attention. His address is 1144 Patton Road. Back in August of 2020, he had a water leak and his bill was $921.25. This was a leak on his side of the meter. It was at no fault at all of the Town of Franklin's. He went through the appropriate appeal process. He appealed this water decision to be charged for the portion to our public works director who denied it. His next step then was to appeal it to town management. Again, I have denied it, so his next stride of appeal is to town council. I would just caution the town council for consideration of this matter, because the resident did use this water. Unfortunately, it was a leak, but it would set a precedent for future water releases.
Any comment, any questions, Manager? If not, I guess we need to wrestle with it and have a motion whether we will or will not waive this fee. Is that, is that correct, Counselor? Is that where we are? Okay. So I'll entertain a motion either way.
I move to deny the request.
We have a motion and a second? Any further discussion? All in favor? Okay. Thank you. Discussion on early retirement for law enforcement offices. Counselor and Mr. Talon.
Mr. Mayor, I have presented all of you in your packet with proposed language that would go into your personnel policy, taking advantage of, and you'll see there's a section of general statutes there cited, that makes it possible to offer law enforcement, you all have been working in this long enough to know that law enforcement retirement is, carries some heavier obligations than it does for regular rank and file employees. This statute makes it possible for an entity like the town to offer employees that are eligible at a certain date of, for retirement to take an early buy, it's essentially a buyout. So it would let you buy out their retirement obligation, which they take in just one lump sum, and then that ends your obligation. So it's a cost savings possibility. The way I've drafted this doesn't obligate you or them to do either. It would, what it would do is just set up a yearly process by which, in time for budget purposes, your manager can find out who might be interested in a buyout, and you could weigh exactly how much savings you would be looking at in a given, for given buyout. And then go back to that person with an offer once it's in the budget for that year. Travis, is that about the size of it, or you wanna give them some examples of what that might look like?
Yeah, that's a basic summary. We've been working on this at the ordinance review meetings the last couple of months. I brought some numbers with me just for your consideration. I think we're just looking tonight to see if that's something we need to continue to work on or not. But some numbers that I brought, for example, employee A would get $1,041 per month. In 13 years, that would equal $162,500, a little more. Employee B, if they hit a 30-year retirement and got the full amount, would get $1,658 a month. For nine years, that would cost the town $179,000. So this proposal that John is coming here with, at 25 years of service, law enforcement would be eligible for early retirement, and the state has given municipalities the opportunity to offer this lump sum. So I wanted to give you the bigger picture of, you know, after so many years, how much town's gonna pay out versus what could come out in the lump sum. And all just depends on that employee and whether they would wanna stretch it out or take the lump up front.
Have a formula for that, to come up with that number?
There, the formula that I just told you, those long numbers, there is a formula and it comes down.
So it would be consistent among?
Yes. As for the buyout, there isn't, there's no specific formula for that. That would be up to you guys.
And if I may, Mr. Mayor and Council.
Yes, ma'am.
One of the discussions we've been having at ordinance review was looking at a buyout around $40,000. You know, at the 25-year mark, you could offer that $40,000 upfront, of course, if it fell through the budget correctly, which could potentially be a savings to the town in the long run. As you heard some of those numbers, employee A and B, you're looking at $160,000, $170,000 versus you could offer that option, we'll pay you your lump sum, here's $40,000. And some may take that opportunity, because they may not see themselves, you know, being on the town payroll for 10 or 15 years. So this is just some consideration. I know this has been one topic we've looked at for several years, because at some point, especially with your LEO, we have a lot of possible retirements in that department, especially in the next five to 10 years. And when you're looking at almost $200,000 a pop for those, we have to start looking at some alternative solutions to help decrease that number. Again, this isn't mandatory, but it could be used as a tool. So we've just been batting this back and forth at ordinance review, and by no means we're not looking for any decision tonight. We just wanted to bring it to council, start getting your feedback, and see if this is even an avenue you want us to continue to pursue.
Yes, sir.
What's the percentage of town contribution to the retirement system now for law enforcement?
It's 10?
It's higher, it's hard at 10%.
It's going up to, I think, right 13% in the next two years.
So what we're saying is, if a person wanted to retire, if they worked for another five years, then your 10 or 11 or whatever percentage it is that the town would put into that person's retirement, assuming that they stayed with the town for that period of time, is that what we're saying? Is that, is that where you're saying you're saving the money? I guess I'm trying to get a handle on where the money is being saved from, if you have an early buyout.
Yeah, actually. Councilmember Horton, I mean, yeah, in a roundabout way, that would save that, that payment into the state, but that's separate from what we're talking about here.
Yeah, the biggest thing, this is coming from, I believe it was established in the late 80s, it was a state mandate that if you have, I think if you're law enforcement, if you have 30 years or more of service, you are entitled, either at the local, whether it's county or town government, you're entitled to a separation allowance until you're 62 or 64. 62?
Yes.
Okay. So we're running into some issues. If we, we've got some employees who started their career very early, so they're retiring out at the age of 50. So we are now paying them from 50 to their 62 on this separation pay. But there could be some cost savings where you're going, Councilmember Horton, but the big thing is right now is this separation pay.
The law enforcement separation allowance is what you're really saving the money from?
Yes, sir.
You're actually giving them less money than if they would've stayed and you paid the entire amount, so it's for, it's a retirement benefit. And the other thing is, the law enforcement is treated a little bit differently than regular employees, because the match on retirement is higher than what it is on other, other employees. And I think they do have, isn't it 25 years now that you can retire? Or do you ask that?
That's during retirement.
Can you, can you retire at 25?
No.
With full benefits? In law enforcement?
It's an early retirement, and that's actually this law.
Can this be 30? I always thought they were pushing the change, that's a 25.
You can retire at 25, but they penalize detective.
You only get 75% of what you normally would get unless you stayed to 30.
And it's actually that law that has given us this opportunity to offer this lump sum buyout. So that, that was tied together, I think it came two years ago. So it's still fairly new, and I think it's still being worked out by the municipalities that would like to look at it. And so that's just some steps that we've been taking.
What a picture this would look like in summer, tell me if I'm getting out of line here, but on a yearly basis, if you, if you put this into your policy, it lets management know that they can say to your police department, anybody who would be eligible for this at 25 and is interested in a potential offer of a buyout, let us know. She can come back to you at budget time and say, if we budget X number of dollars, we will try to buy out three employees, however many she's got that are potentially interested in it, and a potential savings of X dollars over Y years.
And it's totally voluntary.
It would be voluntary.
That's, that's only, if somebody wants to retire, have we got any incentives for people who are doing a good job and we'd like to keep them on for a while?
That gets work for the Town of Franklin.
Counselor, I don't believe we need a motion. Can we just have like the, did somebody have a question? Mr. Collins?
My thought is, is I don't know why we wouldn't put something like this in our inventory for use as come necessary. The numbers probably are not as far apart, given present use, you know, present use of money versus over time. And then if they get it and they die, then they've died it, and they just, I guess it doesn't pass to their heirs. It's okay, so I mean, it's not, but it, it could work, it could be a win-win situation in certain areas.
Yeah, they may have some life, unforeseen life event toward that buyout.
Yeah, it could, it could, it could be useful for both sides. I don't know why we wouldn't have it.
Now, these, these are for sworn officers only, is my understanding.
Yeah, it's gotta be sworn.
Administrative or anything like that. It's only sworn officers.
Sworn law enforcement.
Okay, any further discussion? If not, do we wanna take a vote, or we just wanna get a consensus of the board to proceed and place this into our personnel policy?
I think we do need a vote, because if I remember right, Mr. Mayor, the personnel policy says the council will act to amend it if it's.
Okay, would someone like?
The question then I have is, is the language that we have here, what's gonna be in the ordinance, or is it a different wording needs to be put in there in order to amend the personnel ordinance?
This would be language in your personnel policy, and it's just a policy, not an ordinance, so if you, we put this in, you don't like it, it can come right back out. It's fairly flexible.
Are we in position to move forward tonight? Was that the plan?
You don't, you don't have to. You can chew on this for another month, and that's not a problem. And again, it's not, none of this is gonna be, even if you passed it, mandatory stuff anyway, it would just put a process in place, but it can, it can wait.
And Mr. Counsel and Mayor, if I may, one thing to look at too, is if we could bring this back for you again next month, one thing we could tie in there is actually put a, you know, amount on there, the $40,000, and then some other discussions we've had here at ordinance review. As we know, insurance is a huge factor in general fund budgets. So one of the questions that we had been batting about at ordinance review, and we wanted some direction from council, is if an employee, if a police officer chose this early buyout, they would possibly forfeit their right to full health insurance?
So we still have a little.
That's something just to consider, you know, that was another factor in this for potential cost savings.
I think even if you voted on it not, we would still have to come back and have that conversation.
Yeah.
Do you need something from us then to advance it?
Just some, just maybe some discussion on, do you, you know, is that even feasible about health insurance? Is that something you still want us to pay? I think right now, just in retired health insurance alone, that budget item's almost $50,000. So I mean, just trying to look at ways to assist our employees, but also be mindful of the tax dollars that go into this.
Again, it being totally voluntary, I mean, it's entirely up to the officer and the situation that they're in. I mean, they could have another job that they're gonna hop over to, that this could be just a windfall, and then they're moving to the next position.
I don't necessarily think the two are intertwined, though, health and coverage and then their supplement, I don't necessarily think the two are intertwined as far as severability. I mean, they've worked their, they've worked a fairly long time, even 25 years is a long time.
Oh, no, no, I, I agree, but if they're, if they're wanting to enter the program and get the bulk sum.
I think, I think that's a good point, but they need to be aware of that, because I have seen people who retired as soon as they were eligible, and then look at the other side, where their health insurance was only in effect for a number of years if they stayed beyond that time. And so they're two, like you say, like they're two different things, but if someone wants to take advantage of this early retirement thing, they need to know what the consequences may be as far as their health insurance coverage after they retire.
And may I add to that? The way our personnel policy is written now, almost any employee has to have 30 years anyway to have health insurance coverage. There's some exceptions written in where there's a partial payment, but for the most part, the way it's written, if an employee in this program decides to go out 25 years, unless the policy was changed or we changed it when this is passed, they're still not gonna qualify for health insurance.
Well, as it stands now anyway, the way this thing's set up, it really benefits your officers that are maybe one, two, three, four, five years into their career. The guys that have 20 and 25 years, they, it's just worth it to them to work another five years and get to 30.
Right.
So, because they really do leave a lot of money on the table if they retire at 25.
So Counselor, do we need a motion, or are we gonna just let this?
I think with your administration's got consensus of the board, the council to proceed and examine it and bring it back to you.
So we'll bring it back at the January meeting?
We'll have some more language for you guys at your January meeting.
Good enough. Okay. Next item, legal. Discussion on parades and demonstrations. Counselor?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, the events of the summer and early fall kind of brought into focus whether we needed to reexamine both your policies and ordinances around the subject, especially of demonstration. Doing so led me to kind of reexamine the parades and demonstrations ordinance that you have, and found some places that really need attention in terms of compliance with some more recent case law, particularly dealing with things like making clear that protests that stay entirely on a sidewalk and obey traffic rules are not something that you can really regulate through an ordinance like this, that you have to make some provision for small gatherings that don't really pose any kind of health or safety risk, and that come about on the spur of a moment, kind of a basis. So those changes are all made in here. I leave it to your discretion whether to go ahead and approve this tonight. It's not, not that urgent a thing. I think it's ready for adoption, and as it's a police power ordinance, doesn't require you to have a hearing or anything. So I'm happy to answer any questions about it. Again, it's ready for adoption tonight or to take into.
Ms. McCray?
Yes, I was thinking of something like the Women's History Trail, where we might have a group that wants to have a tour, and I don't know if they would follow these numbers that you have here. It's non-political, it's educational, but there could be a group of maybe a dozen people together going from one market to the next. So, and other types of tours, historical tours or whatever. I see every now and then, you know, some group organized some kind of a historic, history tour, and I see them walking around pointing things out. history tour and I see them walking around pointing things out. So that kind of a gathering to be allowed without any problems.
Let me, let me throw this out, maybe for discussion. But when the lifting of the COVID restrictions take place, is this going to make any of this a mute issue? How much of this is coming about as a result of the pandemic and all the things that government is asking the public to do and not to do, the rights that we're taking away, whatever? Is this, is this being perpetrated by COVID pretty much? I mean, we never really seemed to have a lot of problems and then COVID hit.
Well, I agree that the coming of COVID and, well, not just COVID, but all of the political scene we've just been weathered through and other social movements just led to kind of a reexamination of the ordinance in general. I'm just trying to get you to a compliant ordinance that, you know, doesn't have any holes that courts have already said are, you know, problematic. So regardless of who is doing what protesting right now, I think you've got to address these things at some point. To Councilwoman McCray's point, I, that's a good point. I don't think that what you're talking about would be properly construed as a demonstration.
Kind of either, but just want to make sure that they're not forbidden.
Right.
You don't have to get a permit or something.
Right, no, and I don't think they would be.
I was looking at exceptions and I thought, hell, doesn't seem to fit there. I wonder.
Well, and we might examine whether you want to more specifically define, you know-
Cultural or historical tours or something like that.
Yeah. Well, we could look at that.
Oh, I'm sorry, go right ahead, sir.
I was going to say, this, if, I think I can read the legalese properly and put it in layman's terms, this puts us into a scheduling body for the gazebo, but allows for spontaneous demonstrations. Is that reading between the lines?
Well, I don't know that we are trying to specifically address the gazebo because that's a little bit different. Is that the difference there? This is supposed to be how you're going to deal with parades and demonstrations that happen anywhere in the town. The gazebo is a little bit of a special case because yes, it would apply, this would apply and govern things and mostly schedule them and make sure that they just are safe because that is the upshot of this whole thing. The gazebo, I think we still want to make sure you've got a process that the council's comfortable with about how that property in itself is going to be made available for things. But that again is also scheduling, it's just has, it's a little bit of a special case.
But let's say we make a poor decision in tonight's meeting and 16 people from the town want to go and bark about it on Town Square in an hour. They have every right and ability to do that and we're not trying to restrict them from doing that.
I think that we've got-
Because that would be a spontaneous eruption due to an immediate event. I think I read that correctly.
Yeah, that's right. And I think where we landed there also, I had some proposed language at one point that said if it was any more than 10 people, that's no longer a small gathering, but that was a pretty arbitrary number. And what we talked about with Chief Harrell was leaving some discretion for your PD to decide whether or not we've got a problem here or not. So yeah, I think in all likelihood, he would look at that and say, I don't really see a safety problem here.
But those numbers were based on the pandemic, were they not?
No, that's-
I thought they were.
No, sir, the group, I mean, there is no case that says you must treat a, there's a case that says if it's a small spontaneous demonstration that just happens because of a current event, you have to leave some wiggle room in your ordinance that doesn't punish that and say, you didn't get a permit, you're now, you violated the law. There isn't a case that says it must be at 10 people. So 10 was a number that I just sort of picked to, you know, whether or not you wanted an exact number or not. And what, you know, some discuss, through some discussion, we landed on, let's leave it into the discretion of the, but there is that, the number you're thinking of, Mr. Mayor, is about 10 people.
That executive order, yeah.
Yeah, and that is part of the governor's order.
This is a thorny issue.
And not to what if this to death, but if a bunch of carolers want to come on Christmas Eve and assembling Christmas carols, they're not violating this ordinance or the spirit of the ordinance?
I think when they demand figgy pudding, that's a little too much. No, I don't think they would be in violation of it. Because again, it really is, and I know Chief Harrell through discussion, he thoroughly understands that this is about health and safety and is going to enforce it, you know, in a like fashion.
Yeah, I just don't want to get to a situation where, you know, a group I don't like or you don't like or chief doesn't like, for whatever reason, to where I don't want objectivity to be abused here.
Sure. We can't judge the content of what a thing is talking about. That's where we get in trouble.
Chief should have the ability to differentiate if, you know, this could actually lead to some sort of violence or this, this could lead to a detrimental situation for our community and he should have the ability to do something about that, but-
And I think if he finds 5,000 people walking and covering up Main Street to sing Christmas carols, he's going to say, we've got a problem here.
Naturally.
Well, then again, what about if I have another eclipse?
Just don't schedule it on a Saturday or a Monday.
We'll never schedule an eclipse on a Saturday again, so, I mean, a Monday, whenever it was. I mean, this is just such a, I don't know that there is any real answer to it. Yes, ma'am?
I think I've read this earlier and now I'm trying to look through it. This doesn't in any way affect like the free speech area at the courthouse.
No, that's the county.
Yeah, I mean, that, well, right, but I mean, nothing in this, within lying in the town prohibits them from any going in that area or whatever.
If you look at it geographically, the whole county could be a free speech zone. We don't have, we have never really designated gazebo a free speech zone. We have allowed it to be used for X, Y, and Z, and we have asked that people reserve it, but we never asked them what they want to use it for.
Right. And again, I feel like that's a little bit separate case because that's about management of town-controlled property.
Exactly.
We, you could consider, and I don't mind admitting to give you some proposed language that would look at, Barbara's, you know, sort of thought about cultural gatherings that are, you know, not for purposes of demonstration and make it clear they're not, and maybe also say, we're not trying to govern the county's free speech zone because that's theirs and they decide what happens. And that's true, I mean, they have their own process.
Is it possible to put language in there of how we do the gazebo reservations too? Like an actual line of command for that type of thing?
You could. I would advise you not to tie down a property management issue that needs sort of day-to-day management to an extent. Because again, I don't think it's the same in terms of, I think what we're going to have is a policy on it eventually that says, manager, do make it available for demonstrations and other types of events as long as there isn't something else already scheduled for it. And it'll be incumbent on the administration not to pick favorites in that. But I know that's what your policy is ultimately going to be is first come, first served.
Well, we do reserve, we have required reserving the gazebo so that you don't have two groups at the same time that could present a real problem.
Right.
It's, and I don't know, we've never really had any problem with reserving it, have we?
Up until this-
Up until the pandemic. Well, I guess we got to have something to blame it on, so we can blame it on the pandemic. It has disrupted all of our lives.
Well, if we're going to err, I'd rather err on the side of personal freedom. So I mean, I'll just throw that out there.
I tend to agree with you on that, Mr. Lewis.
I would prefer we carry it over not making any vote tonight and I'd like to look over it a little, a little better also and have those clarifications.
I totally understand and it is, it is a pretty large thing to try to take off.
And make it clear, we're not trying to infringe upon the rights there. Just because the, even though that is the county that has allowed that, it's still within the town limits to where it might look like we were infringing upon someone's rights.
It's within shouting distance.
Yes.
Hard to separate the, okay.
Yeah, just for clarity, we're not trying to regulate the free speech zone on county property, are we, with this ordinance?
No, but I think, but I think we could make it clear that we're not.
Okay, I mean, that's pretty much a free-for-all, right? I mean-
I think they have a reservation process.
They do.
If I understand right.
It says on the Macon County Courthouse sign, it says that it's a free speech zone and you have to have permission of the county manager, I believe, is it? That may not be exact, but that's the-
That's pretty close.
That's what it, basically that's what it says. You have to get permission from the county manager.
But it's definitely worth making clear that we're not trying to apply this.
Exactly.
I mean, and I think honestly, our Town Square, that we do control the gazebo, should be as close to a free speech zone as is humanly safely possible without maybe calling it a free speech zone.
I think Councilmember Masburn had a good idea, we need to study this and we'll get back at it because there may be some other questions or some issues that we haven't thought of.
Yes.
I'd rather, I'd rather take time to look at it and make sure if we're going to do something that we have it well thought out before we jump into it.
Basically what you're trying to say is we don't want to bog down this thing that could deal with some demonstration that happens on the other side of town with the day-to-day running of, day-to-day gazebo.
Yes.
Basically, because it's not just the gazebo we're talking about, we're talking about if it happens on, out on Old Murphy Road or if it happens in East Franklin or if it happens wherever.
That's right.
You're just not wanting to encumber it with anything that, I mean, you're talking about the gazebo being if it ever does have any, if it's on separate, whatever.
And I think what can help clarify that for everybody is if in January, we come back with the policy on the gazebo to look at side by side with what we're talking about trying to do by ordinance.
I think that's a good idea, we'll do that.
Exactly. Okay, I don't think we need a motion for that, do we? We just, it'll come back up. Okay, anybody else want to weigh in on it before we move on? All right, that takes care of the agenda, except for the announcements, and then I'll go around the table here. Town hall offices will be closed Thursday, December 24th, Friday, December 25th, and Monday, December 28th for Christmas. Town hall offices will be closed Friday, January 1st for New Year's. All right, let's go around the table here. Madam Manager, did we cover everything that you'd like to bring up?
One thing I do want to bring up is, I believe I sent this an email too, that Town of Franklin did receive LGC approval for the fire department substation. So certainly appreciate all the work that Mayor and Council did and the committee members of Franklin Fire Department and office staff to get that accomplished. So we are good to go. So we'll start that paperwork and keep everyone apprised of the process, but thank you on behalf of the fire department, all the work they've done and this board did.
Good work. Counselor, you got anything else?
No, I said no.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm not used to having you over there.
I would just like to give a shout out to all the merchants who are really trying hard to comply with all the rules and regulations about the pandemic. I go into some stores and feel perfectly safe because they are trying so hard, obviously. Sometimes they'll have, sanitize your hands when you go in, make sure you have a mask and tap you on the shoulder if you're too close to somebody. I was impressed with Dollar Tree, no, not Dollar Tree, it was Big Lots, yeah, Big Lots. I thought they did an amazing job to be such a big store and not allow anyone in who's not compliant. And some of the merchants uptown here do a really, really, really good job. Friends of the Library Bookstore, they do an amazing job considering they have a big massive used books in there. So anyway, I want to say thank you to them.
Mr. Horton, sir?
Well, this is the last meeting of the year for us, right? December? I would like to wish everyone a Merry Christmas. And I was, what we've been doing, my wife and I have been married 43 years and each year we buy a Christmas ornament that has the year on it and put it on the tree. We've got a tree full of ornaments by now, you know? And I saw one that I thought I ought to get, it said 2020 on it, and it had a picture of a roll of toilet paper, a can, a bottle of hand sanitizer, and a mask. And so I think if I get that one and hang it on the tree, I shouldn't have any trouble remembering what 2020 was like. But on the positive note, I appreciate, this is my one-year anniversary on this board and I appreciate the staff, I appreciate you, Mayor, and the council members and working so good together over the past year and look forward to 2021.
Absolutely. Ms. Lewis?
Thanks to all involved for clean audit. I know that's not easy, there's a lot of work that goes into that as far as providing them what they need for that, so thank you for that. And I also want to thank all the town employees, not just works, but I know people from this building, they're working down at the gazebo to make that Christmas section down there look like it does. It's incredible. I think we really hit on something this year with what y'all pulled off for Halloween and for Christmas. And I think that's really been a good way to, it's been an anchor, a boon for, hopefully for our merchants. But good on that and like Jack, this is, I guess, my anniversary too.
Happy anniversary, Mike.
Happy anniversary. And let's hope 2020 is truly hindsight.
Absolutely. Ms. Masburn?
Just kind of touch on what Mr. Lewis said. I think out of this year, we have learned a lot of things and came through just with the fireworks for the year that turned out wonderful, the fall decorations and the Christmas. I know one of the merchants said that that was the best thing in the fall that had happened to them, and I'm hearing the same things about Christmas. So I just commend everybody for their work and think that we've managed to, in a bad year, to accomplish some good things. So I just thank everybody.
Ms. Philpiper, sir?
I don't have anything left to say, they already said it all. But yeah, I mean, thank you to the town employees and I'm sorry we're not going to get to do our Christmas dinners, but thank you, all of you guys. Hallmark Channel is going to start filming our gazebo on holidays. Like Jack said about the Christmas ornament, we have one too, but it's a little different. It's actually a dumpster on fire that says 2020.
That's a good one.
Ms. Sarah, you sit up there with us every Monday night.
I think I'm good, but thank you.
Mr. Talon?
I'm good, thank you.
And Mr. Collins?
It was interesting that Dinah led the suggestion that we not take any immediate action on this ordinance and all. Her late husband, Billy, who was probably long with serving board member that I know of, the history, would, he had a red face, you know, but it turned redder every time that he would be asked to, on first review of an item coming up, unless there was just some real pressing need to get something down the stone, he always believed in letting it simmer for a while. You don't know what's in your mind then, it might come up midstream. And I really think the board is very responsible on matters that, even if it seems mundane enough, if there's no huge reason, well, let's just kind of let it brew and we get out in the paper, we might hear something from somebody that we hadn't thought about. But I thought the board was good and Dinah had to been a tribute to Billy because that was his pet peeve. And then I moved that we adjourn.
Well, I, I'm the last and I just want to echo what everybody said and I'll tell you what, this is the greatest bunch of people who work for this town you'll ever find anywhere, bar none. And for that, that I am very thankful that the water stays on, your fire, your oven catches on fire, we put it out, somebody steer your lawnmower, we go recover it for you, and the streets get paved when it snows, so, not paved. Well, how do you know that they don't get paved? Okay, all right, I don't have anything further and I think, Joe, you made a motion to adjourn. All right, is that a second? All right, all in favor, we're adjourned.
Merry Christmas, everybody.
Ho, ho, ho. And they said we couldn't say Merry Christmas.
Somebody did.